Good morning or good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, June 29th, 2004. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, normally at 10:00 AM, but we do have a special meeting time for today only being 12 noon. Members of the public are invited to join us for these proceedings for members of the public unable to attend to council meetings. We can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohan, Labong, Lomizkowsky Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viegosa, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, 11 members present and before Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The Council is officially in session, and this being Tuesday, the first meeting of the week, let me ask Mr. Zine to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Place your hand over your heart, ready to begin.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Cartenas seconds.
Mr. President, this is time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Let's take a general public comment to the first item after dispensing with consent items.
First items, Council has several requests for items to be continued. Item number 16, the applicant requests continuance to July 20th.
Members request to continue item 16, seeing no objections for orders.
Item number 17, applicant requests continuance to September 8th.
Request to continue item 17, also without objection.
And also request from Councilmember Zine to continue item number 73 to July 20th.
Request to continue item 73, without objection. Next item.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing, item 1 through 5 are public hearing items, and they are ordinances. Do you wish to hold those for 12 councilmembers?
We do expect 12 members before holding them on the desk. Let me recognize there are no requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed, and items 1 through 5. Colleagues, on this side of the horseshoe, there's a cellphone ringing in your bag, or you press this side of the horseshoe. It's echoing here. Check your cellphones, please. Items 1 through 5, public hearings are open and closed, and temporarily held on the desk as we do await 12 members today. Next item, please.
Items 6 through 10 are also public hearing items. Council should open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to July 20th.
6 through 10 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. On these items, public hearings are open and without objection continue to July 20th. Next item.
Item number 11, Council should also open the public hearing on that item and continue the hearing and ordinance to August 3rd.
Again, no requests from members of the public to address the council on item 11. Public hearing is open and continued to August 3rd. Next item, please.
Items 12 through 14 are street lighting ordinances. Do you wish to hold those on the desk also?
Yes, and let me again recognize no requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed on items 12 through 14, and they are now held on the desk. Next item.
Item 15 is a planning land use management committee report, a public hearing item, and that is to deny an appeal in Council District 5.
Item 15 now before us. There are no speaker cards on this item. Public hearings are open and closed. Request to call this item special, item 15, seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Items 18 through 21 are housing community neck amount of development committee reports regarding levy of liens, and there is a correction on the amount on item number 18. The correct amount should be $9,147.51.
Members, we have a correction on item 18. We also have cards on items 18 and 19. Let's call those two items special, leaving items 20 and 21 before us without requests from members of the public to address the council. Those public hearings are open and closed. Request for specials on 20 or 21, seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Members, all matters approved today are going forth with all matters today. This is the last week of the fiscal year. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 22 through 39, 22 through 25 are ordinances.
22 through 39 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any specials, Ms. Han?
I'd like to call item 28 special.
28 called special by Ms. Han, Mr. Zine. 24 called special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials? There's no further requests for specials. Let's hold items 22, 23, and 25. Those are ordinances on the desk. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Members, all matters approved today are going forth with all matters today. This is the last week of the fiscal year. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 22 through 39, 22 through 25 are ordinances.
22 through 39 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any specials, Ms. Han?
I'd like to call item 28 special.
28 called special by Ms. Han, Mr. Zine. 24 called special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials? There's no further requests for specials. Let's hold items 22, 23, and 25. Those are ordinances on the desk. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Items 40 through 73 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
We have cards on items 40, 50, and 58. We'll call those items special on the balance of the items. We do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Any requests for specials? Members? If there's no specials, then let's open the roll on these items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 22 through 39, 22 through 25 are ordinances.
22 through 39 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any specials, Ms. Han?
I'd like to call item 28 special.
28 called special by Ms. Han, Mr. Zine. 24 called special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials? There's no further requests for specials. Let's hold items 22, 23, and 25. Those are ordinances on the desk. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Items 40 through 73 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
We have cards on items 40, 50, and 58. We'll call those items special on the balance of the items. We do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Any requests for specials? Members? If there's no specials, then let's open the roll on these items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public, on the supplemental agenda, items for which public hearings have been held. Items 74 through 76, and a community impact statement has been submitted for 74 and 75, and that should be read into the record.
Okay. 74 through 76, public hearings have been held. Mr. Cartenas?
74 and 75 special.
Okay. Leaving item 76. If there's no request to call item 76 special, let's open the roll on 76, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Next items are 77 through 79. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is an urgency clause ordinance on item number 77.
Okay. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on 78 and 79. We do have cards on item 77. We'll call that special. Members wishing to request item 78 or 79 special, seeing none, let's open the roll on those two items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Members, all matters approved today are going forth with all matters today. This is the last week of the fiscal year. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 22 through 39, 22 through 25 are ordinances.
22 through 39 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any specials, Ms. Han?
I'd like to call item 28 special.
28 called special by Ms. Han, Mr. Zine. 24 called special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials? There's no further requests for specials. Let's hold items 22, 23, and 25. Those are ordinances on the desk. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Members, all matters approved today are going forth with all matters today. This is the last week of the fiscal year. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 22 through 39, 22 through 25 are ordinances.
22 through 39 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any specials, Ms. Han?
I'd like to call item 28 special.
28 called special by Ms. Han, Mr. Zine. 24 called special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials? There's no further requests for specials. Let's hold items 22, 23, and 25. Those are ordinances on the desk. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Items 40 through 73 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
We have cards on items 40, 50, and 58. We'll call those items special on the balance of the items. We do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Any requests for specials? Members? If there's no specials, then let's open the roll on these items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Members, all matters approved today are going forth with all matters today. This is the last week of the fiscal year. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 22 through 39, 22 through 25 are ordinances.
22 through 39 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any specials, Ms. Han?
I'd like to call item 28 special.
28 called special by Ms. Han, Mr. Zine. 24 called special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials? There's no further requests for specials. Let's hold items 22, 23, and 25. Those are ordinances on the desk. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Items 40 through 73 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
We have cards on items 40, 50, and 58. We'll call those items special on the balance of the items. We do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Any requests for specials? Members? If there's no specials, then let's open the roll on these items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Items 40 through 73 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
We have cards on items 40, 50, and 58. We'll call those items special on the balance of the items. We do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Any requests for specials? Members? If there's no specials, then let's open the roll on these items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public, on the supplemental agenda, items for which public hearings have been held. Items 74 through 76, and a community impact statement has been submitted for 74 and 75, and that should be read into the record.
Okay. 74 through 76, public hearings have been held. Mr. Cartenas?
74 and 75 special.
Okay. Leaving item 76. If there's no request to call item 76 special, let's open the roll on 76, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Next items are 77 through 79. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is an urgency clause ordinance on item number 77.
Okay. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on 78 and 79. We do have cards on item 77. We'll call that special. Members wishing to request item 78 or 79 special, seeing none, let's open the roll on those two items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. And again, all matters approved today go forth with... Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Coming back to public comment. Clerk, if you'd put a clock up on the board. The council calls forward at this time Michael St. Hill, followed by Irene Casimer, Bellos, Larry Green, and Brian Diaz. If you form a line behind the podium, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael St. Hill. And I want you to know, some of you know me, I've been here before, and I want you to, I ask you to privatize LA Police Department because it's a rotten, dirty, major department. There's no good in LA Police Department. And I'm a classic example of this. I'm a law-abiding citizen, as you know, and a good individual, but I had a gun put to my head. I got beat up by LA Police Department. I got harassed in very, in many ways by the helicopter division. I am totally traumatized by LA Police Department. So I have two lawsuits on the LA Police Department right now, right in federal court and the state court. I'm asking you to privatize this department because the citizens of LA would gain, if you privatize the LA Police Department, what you're gonna get is 25% drop in crime in every precinct. That's the crime the LA Police Department is doing themselves. The dope on the street is owned by LA Police Department. They're the ones who have given the dope to the dope dealers to carry out on the street. You have the bums on the street who walks around downtown for carrying the dope for LA Police Department. On and on and on and on. LA Police Department needs to be privatized, remove the liabilities from the city of LA, remove the, remove all of the rotten, dirty, underhanded cops, and they will be, they will be responsible to the cities, to the citizens then after. Privatize LA Police Department. It's a rotten, dirty, major department.
Thank you very much. Next, good kindly. Come on, Larry. Don't be shy.
Okay. First of all, I only got a couple of minutes. I first want to say, I ran into my friend Tiana in Hollywood the other day. She had her car towed. She's from Chicago.
Do you wish to hold those on the desk also?
Yes, and let me again recognize no requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed on items twelve through fourteen, and they are now held on the desk. Next item.
Item fifteen is a planning and use management committee report, a public hearing item, and that is to deny an appeal in council District Five.
Okay, item fifteen now before us. There are no speaker cards on this item. Public hearing is open and closed. Request to call this item special, item fifteen, seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Items eighteen through twenty-one are housing community neck amount of development committee reports regarding levy of liens, and there is a correction on the amount on item number eighteen. The correct amount should be nine thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents.
Okay, members, we have a correction, item eighteen. We also have cards on item eighteen and nineteen. Let's call those two items special, leaving items twenty and twenty-one before us without requests from members of the public to address the council. Those public hearings are open and closed. Request for specials on twenty or twenty-one, seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Members, all matters approved today are going forth with all matters today. This is the last week of the fiscal year. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items twenty-two through thirty-nine, twenty-two through twenty-five are ordinances.
Twenty-two through thirty-nine now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any specials, Ms. Han?
Thank you, I'd like to call item twenty-eight special.
Twenty-eight called special by Ms. Han, Mr. Stein. Twenty-four called special by Mr. Stein. Any other specials? There's no further requests for specials. Let's hold items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-five. Those are ordinances on the desk. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Items forty through seventy-three are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have cards on items forty, fifty, and fifty-eight. We'll call those items special on the balance of the items. We do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Any requests for specials? Members? There's no specials, then let's open the roll on these items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public, on the supplemental agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items seventy-four through seventy-six, and a community impact statement has been submitted for seventy-four and seventy-five, and that should be read into the records.
Okay, seventy-four through seventy-six, public hearings have been held. Mr. Cardenas?
Seventy-four and seventy-five special.
Okay, leaving item seventy-six. If there's no request, call item seventy-six special. Let's open the roll on seventy-six, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Next items are seventy-seven through seventy-nine. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there is an urgency clause ordinance on item number seventy-seven.
Okay, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on seventy-eight and seventy-nine. We do have cards on item seventy-seven. We'll call that special. Members wishing to request item seventy-eight or seventy-nine special, seeing none. Let's open the roll on those two items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. And again, all matters approved today go forth with... Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Coming back to public comment. Clerk, if you'd put a clock up on the board. The council calls forward at this time Michael Stanhill, followed by Irene Casmer, Melrose Larry Green, and Brian Diaz. If you form a line behind the podium, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Michael Stanhill. And I want you to know, some of you know me, I've been here before, and I want you to, I ask you to privatize LA Police Department because it's a rotten, dirty, major department. There's no good in LA Police Department. And I'm a classic example of this. I'm a law-abiding citizen, as you know, and a good individual, but I had a gun put to my head. I got beat by LA Police Department. I got harassed in many ways by the helicopter division. I am totally traumatized by LA Police Department. So I have two lawsuits on the LA Police Department right now, right in federal court and the state court. I'm asking you to privatize this department because the citizens of LA would gain, if you privatize the LA Police Department, what you're going to get is twenty-five percent drop in crime in every precinct. That's the crime the LA Police Department is doing themselves. The dope on the street is owned by LA Police Department. They're the ones who have given the dope to the dope dealers to carry out on the street. You have the bums on the street who walks around downtown or carrying the dope for LA Police Department. On and on and on and on. LA Police Department needs to be privatized, remove the liabilities from the city of LA, remove the, remove all of the rotten, dirty, underhanded cops, and they will be responsible to the citizens then after. Privatize LA Police Department. It's a rotten, dirty, major department.
Thank you very much. Next, you kindly. Come on, Larry. Don't be shy.
Okay, first of all, I only got a couple of minutes. I first want to say, I ran into my friend Tiana in Hollywood that day. She had her car towed, she's from Chicago, at four oh seven PM, Eric, right on Sunset Boulevard. She had her car towed, she was ready to go, to leave. Her car was towed at four oh seven. She got two hundred sixty-eight dollars in impound fees and tickets, and the tow truck driver wanted to reverse it, but the DOT woman would not, and wrote her a ticket. And I really think that you should know about this. She's right here, Tiana, she's going back to Chicago tomorrow. That's your councilman, Mr. Garcetti. But I didn't come here to talk about that, but I happened to run into her at an arraignment in the Superior Courts Building. So this is why I came to talk about. Oh, you're next. Can I go? And then you go right after me? It won't take away from your time. What do I do, councilman?
She's just asking you to hurry it up, that's all.
Okay, okay. I want to talk very briefly about the event that happened with the LAPD. Excuse me, I'm sorry, ma'am. Excuse me. The event of some facts about this case with Ronald Miller. Ronald Miller had convictions for car theft, attempted burglary, violation of probation, as a longtime user of crack cocaine in today's LA Times. This is about the event happening last week in South LA. It was five AM in the morning, five AM, LAPD following someone who was evading the police, a car theft suspect. What are they supposed to do? They thought the man had a gun, or maybe wire cutters. It's in today's paper. Fact is, appears that, there's a committee set up by Mayor Han. Every liberal in town's on this committee. Every minister, MCL, you remember? Not one cop is on this committee. Now you, Councilman Parks, you were pretty good. I think you spent about thirty-eight years with the LAPD. You made a point in today's paper, there's plenty of committees. Councilman Stein, you made some great points. Hope you all read today's LA Times. I think it's important, I'm wrapping it up, it's not even two minutes. I'm wrapping it up, Alex. I think it's important that the LAPD chief, Mr. Bratton, and we all know Mayor Han, your brother, is up for reelection next year, that they all support the rank and file. And I know Dennis Stein's a former cop, and let it go on record that Melrose Larry Green supports the rank and file, the LAPD, and you're innocent until you're proven guilty.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Thank you very much, honorable council member and honorable president of the council. I'm Irene Casmer, I'm from the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators, and I am here to ask you, please, you have a preliminary draft in front of your tables, and I have had it now for six weeks, and the museum really needs it. You also have in front of you, and close you will find copies of hundreds of signed letters in support of the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators. These are from people from this city, whom you represent, and they are just a small sampling of those who wish to see the Los Angeles City Council follow through with all the agreements made to the fashion industry and to the museum. I would like to, I would like to put in the records the letters that were signed, there is about a thousand, that I brought only a couple of, I don't know, less than a hundred. I believe that this city needs its Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators, MODAC. Its mandate is to preserve records and display in a museum setting the past, the present, and the future of the California fashion industry and the rest of American fashion. This is a nonprofit agency that creates jobs, retains jobs, and increases our economy. We are number one employer. This organization, MODAC, founded thirteen years ago by the industry innovator, will be a leader in acquainting the new generation educations and well as invaluable resource in the creation of, retention of hundreds and hundreds of business within the fashion industry.
Irene, can I ask you to conclude, please? We have other speakers. Can I ask you to wrap it up?
Yes. MODAC is vital to our number one industry and growth of downtown Los Angeles. I believe that this city needs MODAC. MODAC is the acronym of the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators. So we have its showcase, permanent home, and the Hearst Examiner Building as the city decided, dedicated, and did it when they voted within the downtown strategic plan. I understand that this time the essences of the, is, other cities are proclaiming the right which Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators, Museum of Fashion instigated, that our industry is number one, and we are the fashion capital of the world.
Thank you, Irene. I'm going to have to call the next speaker now.
Thank you very, very much for listening. I hope you read it, and you will keep all the promises and all the agreements that a museum made with the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, my name is Brian Diaz, and, well, I'd like to express my thanks for this opportunity to speak to you, the elect elders of the city. You know, on the day of Pentecost, Peter made a very important declaration. He said, "Repay and be baptized, every one of you, in the name of Jesus Christ, for the remissions of sin, and you shall receive the gift of the Holy Spirit." Well, you know, it was from that point in time on, every one of us was to be baptized in the name of Jesus Christ as we now know it, in the baptism, in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Sir, if I can ask you to take a pause. General public comment is for matters within our jurisdiction, so we needed to speak to matters that relate to the city and the city's business.
Well, of course, you know, Los Angeles being the home of the Azusa Street Revival, there at the turn of the century, I believe that we are on the crest of a very important revival taking place, the restoration of his name in the Hebrew.
Sir, again, this is not a forum for religious issues. If you have something pertaining to a city department, to city program or function, you can feel free to express yourself.
Well, obviously, it affects everything. Obviously, there's other things on the agenda that reflect religious...
But that's beyond the scope of our jurisdiction here. So if you're not going to speak to something within our jurisdiction, I'm going to have to ask you to end at this time.
Well, sir, you know, like I say, his name in the Hebrew, the high name of the Father, Yahweh, Yeshua, Tabernacle.
Okay, thank you very much for being here. You're welcome to stay, but we're going to conclude public comment at this time. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next item is, Mr. President, there are orders still on the desk, but item number eighteen was called special for a card from the public.
Okay, item eighteen, now before us, colleagues, and the council calls forward.
My name is Brad Hammond, speaking on behalf of Residential Investments, owner of four five one South Mixel Street. I wanted to just protest, the city, I guess the LA Housing Department is trying to put a lien on the property for work that they allegedly did prior to the company's ownership, and, and, I wanted to... Is everybody listening?
Yeah, we're listening.
Okay. So I just want to protest that they never gave the, a full accounting of why they were going to put this lien on the property, and furthermore, I had a, there was a management company that was the owner of the property prior to this company taking over. They have funds in trust account from, they have funds in trust from the prior owner, and I've tried to get the city to submit bills to them, you know, so that they can get the funds for the alleged work that they did prior to our ownership, and they haven't done that, and there's actually enough money to pay for this bill in the, in the trust account of the previous owner. The previous owner passed away, purchased the property in probate. So I'm asking that the city council does not put a lien on the property for work that I've never gotten accounting for, or what work was done when we took over the property. There was no evidence that any work had ever been completed.
Okay, thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Members, item eighteen is currently before us. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Ms. Han? No? Members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Did you wish to be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, if you would indulge me and some of the members of the community of Wilmington, if you have no objection, I'd like to take item twenty-eight now.
Any objections to taking item twenty-eight out of order? If not, then let's go to item twenty-eight. Did you wish to speak first, Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item where we're going to hear briefly about waterfront development in Wilmington, and I thought it was important that we bring this before the city council today. We talk about waterfront development in San Pedro all the time, but we very, very rarely remember that the community of Wilmington also has a waterfront. And I think I would like for my colleagues to sort of be informed on what we're actually doing to give that community some access to its waterfront, and also to be separated from the industrial activities of the Port of Los Angeles. So I'd like to have Dave Matheson come and give us a brief overview of what we're planning to do in that community, and then have some of the community members speak.
Thank you, council member. Good afternoon, council. My name is David Matheson, Director of Planning and Environmental Affairs for the Harvard Department. As Councilwoman Han had mentioned, the, there's been an effort to develop the waterfront in the Wilmington community, and this effort was undertaken by the Port Community Advisory Committee, and they completed their work in March of this year, and that work was done with, through the assistance of an outside planning consultant, SMWM. What I'd like to do is just to briefly go through some of the major elements of this plan, that is, before you this afternoon. The, the plan that was approved by the Port Community Advisory Committee, and for those of you who don't know, it's an organization that's made up of homeowners and business and the business in the San Pedro and Wilmington, uh, San Pedro and Wilmington communities. They identified a redevelopment plan which focused on the Avalon Boulevard corridor, as well as the area between Harry Bridges Boulevard and C Street to the north. That area runs east-west, and the Wilmington community is just immediately north of the harbor area. Those are the two areas of focus that the community looked at, and through their planning process, they came up with a plan which identified three potential alternatives for the reuse of the, of that area, as well as the redevelopment of the Avalon Boulevard corridor. The Avalon Boulevard corridor was identified to accommodate a mixed use of uses, including commercial, light industrial uses, as well as providing for an expansion of waterfront access at Banning's Landing. Also, along that corridor was some additional open space opportunities for the community. The second area that they focused on was the area between Harry Bridges and C Street. Over the years, the Harvard Department has acquired approximately twenty-plus acres over the years, and the initial intent was to utilize that property to accommodate cargo handling operations. The community looked at that and identified several alternatives. The one that's before used, the one that they wanted to proceed with, was to keep Harry Bridges Boulevard in its current alignment and utilize that property between that area and C Street for a passive open space area. They wanted to use this and develop it as a buffer area between the port and the community. That would include some, the development of some community facilities, a rolling berm, and again, passive open space uses. In addition, the plan that's before you today also includes some transportation improvements. They identified various grade separation locations, and although those aren't set in concrete at this point, that's just an idea that is being presented, that there will be some needs for some transportation improvements, and that's also included in this plan. They also looked at extension of the, of the red car trolley line into the Wilmington community. And the plan also included an implementation schedule, and they'd looked at certain elements of the plan to be completed by the end of this year, two thousand five, two thousand six. And as part of those implementation measures for the completion during this current calendar year, it, those included the extension of the waterfront promenade at Banning's Landing, landscape improvements along Avalon Boulevard, as well as a commitment from the Board of Harbor Commissioners that the area between Harry Bridges and B Street would be committed to open space use. That PCCAC recommended plan has been approved by the full PCCAC. It has been presented to the Board of Harbor Commissioners for action, and the procedure with respect to PCCAC motions is that that is assigned to staff for review, and at this point, staff is reviewing that and will shortly be making a recommendation back to the full board with respect to the processing of this plan. We're not waiting as we proceed with this and the environmental, for this plan. We, staff is looking at opportunities to implement this plan where we can right now, and there's a couple of areas that we're looking at doing. One is some immediate landscape improvements along Avalon Boulevard, and we are working with an ad hoc community group in Wilmington to move that forward quickly. And the, the other area that we're looking at doing immediately is the expansion of the promenade at Banning's Landing. And again, we are working that issue along with the landscape improvements through this ad hoc committee. And a point of note, though, that the expansion of the promenade along the waterfront will require the cooperation with our sister agency, Department of Water and Power. They have some property just north of that waterfront which is required to accommodate parking, so we can move the parking off the waterfront and move the parking in the back land where we think it's more appropriate as a use. That concludes my brief overview, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Han?
Thank you very much. I, what I thought now, I think we, I have to move to open public hearing so some of the members of the community can speak, and I'd like to do that, and then I'll have some closing remarks.
For five minutes?
Five minutes, how many cards do we have?
I think we have about six or so.
Six or so.
Three, four, five, seven cards.
How many?
Seven.
Ten minutes, that's okay.
Colleagues, no objection? Okay, and let me again just remind us all that this item has had public hearing in committee, so reopening the public hearing to hear from the folks who have made some time to join us here this morning in your brevity would be appreciated. If you form a line behind the podium, please, Ken Melendez, followed by Donna Ethington, Skip Baldwin, Sylvia Garabey, Olivia Cueva Fernandez, Tony O'Donnell, and Raoul Orozco.
Yeah, good morning, my name's Ken Melendez. I'm a former twenty-year resident of Wilmington. I'm president of the Wilmington Business Improvement District, member of PCCAC, and I'm the new chair of the Wilmington Waterfront Subcommittee. I'm president of the Homero Association where I live in Harbor City. When you have a lot of titles, that means no one wants those jobs. So, anyway, one thing I want to say is we've gone through this long process, two and a half years, which the mayor set up the PCCAC, and our plan is about balance, it's about equity, it's about having, allowing the port to function, but at the same time, providing the community with a buffer area, and for Wilmington, some additional waterfront for Wilmington. So I hope all of you can support it, and I'm very thankful for the council one for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Donna Ethington, resident of Wilmington for the last twenty-five years, member of the Port Community Advisory Board and the Wilmington Neighborhood Council. First, I would like to thank Mayor Han for his two thousand one directive that established the Port Community Advisory Committee, and as a permanent standing committee of the Board of Harbor Commissioners. This monumental accomplishment has opened the line of communication between the port and the community for the first time in the history of the port. It's been a big learning experience for all of us, and it hasn't always been easy, but somewhere along the line, we've turned the corner, and what many call the Hundred Years' War has evolved into friendships and a real working relationship that will benefit the port, the city, and the harbor communities for generations to come. For twenty years, the Wilmington community opposed the TRAPAC terminal expansion, and a twenty-foot-high wall that would forever separate... a twenty-foot-high wall that would forever separate it from even a view of its waterfront and move a heavy truck route and stacks of containers into the community. It was the ultimate slap on the face to a community that bears so much of the burden of the port operations. In 2000, the port held a series of community workshops, and the wall was modified to a twenty-foot-high landscape berm and promenade, but to many in the community, it was still a wall. After the advisory committee was established, Wilmington Subcommittee members and port staff tried for months to reach a compromise that would work better for the community, and the port finally hired the SMWM design firm to help accomplish this. Initially, the planning area was limited to a narrow strip of land that allowed for the road realignment and terminal expansion in a larger plaza area.
Ma'am, if I can ask you to conclude, we have other speakers waiting, and our time is taken here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you all for considering this motion, and I want you to know that this is a really important issue for the community of Wilmington. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very well said. Skip Baldwin, please, and again, if I can ask for a line behind the podium, Sylvia Garabey, Olivia Cueva, Tony O'Donnell, Raoul Orozco.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to appear here today. I am Skip Baldwin, Wilmington Citizens Committee, third-term elected neighborhood council member, legitimately elected Wilmington honorary mayor, and also PCAC member. To me, what's important on this, and I think it's been overlooked, if you will put this buffer in, it separates us by five hundred foot from the port. And it also, in doing this, it's going to close off some streets that the trucks are using now to run through our neighborhoods with. A good example, while you can't see these photographs, a good example is what our own councilman has observed. Here is a truck hauling rolled steel from the port, going by our posted signs, nothing over six thousand pounds, going by them till it reaches our main street of Anaheim Street and fries. At that point, it takes an illegal turn, and in taking the illegal turn, it simply crushes a pickup truck that is there legally. So if you will be kind enough to pass this motion for us, we're going to have a nice buffer zone down along the port, and these trucks will not be able to come through the streets and ravage the community. Again, I thank you kindly for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Sylvia Garabey. I've lived in Wilmington for over fifty-five years. I want to thank Janice Han for what she's done for Wilmington, at least she's trying. And I'm really for this proposal because we have so many trucks going through our community, and once we have this buffer zone, maybe it'll alleviate some of the problems we have. We have so many problems in Wilmington. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Olivia Cueva Fernandez. I was a former library commissioner, and I'd like to speak out of order and say thank you again for your continuing support of our city libraries. They are important to the community, but this project in Wilmington is just as important for our community, for the city, and for the country. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tony O'Donnell, and I'm the Chair of the Wilmington Neighborhood Council, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this afternoon, as well as thank Councilwoman Janice Han for moving this agenda item forward on the agenda. I'd like to inform the council that at the March 24th meeting of the Wilmington Neighborhood Council, that we had a nineteen in favor and one abstention vote in favor of supporting this Wilmington community alternative plan for the Wilmington waterfront development. I'd also like to state the Wilmington Neighborhood Council was the first neighborhood council certified in the city of Los Angeles. We're very proud of the fact that we're made up of a diverse cross-section of the community, including residents groups, business and industry, labor, community fraternal and recreation groups, as well as members that represent churches and educational institutions. We're very proud of the fact that we are a diverse cross-section of the community, and we'd like you to consider that support for this motion is a strong representation of the community of Wilmington, and we hope that you move this item forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Raoul Orozco. I'm a longtime resident of Wilmington, thirty-five years. This buffer zone, it's very important to us. There's not a whole lot of open space in Wilmington. There's only two parks, very crowded, very small. So this is very important for the kids, very important for the community, to have this buffer zone, to eliminate the trucks coming into our community, but also getting the city to be a little bit more green. We don't have much greenery over there. We have a lot of problems. So one of the things that I see is by having this, the kids, they'll grow up in a much better environment than I grew up in. My backyard, at the time, when I was growing up, I lived very close to the port, and it was the port, some fences, some trucks, and some junkyards. We need to change that for the kids growing up. That's why I think a lot of the problems we're having as far as gangs and crime and stuff is because that's what kids see. They see the quality of life in Wilmington not that great, so please, let's change that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment. Item twenty-eight. Ms. Han? Actually, Mr. Cardenas is on the queue.
I just wanted to take a moment. This item came through the Commerce Committee, of which Janice Han sits on, and so does Ms. Sikowski and myself, and this is a big deal. I want to talk not only to the people who are here who understand that it's a big deal for your community of Wilmington, but also to the people of Los Angeles, that this is an issue that has traversed multi-billion-dollar corporations, that involves federal regulations, that involves local regulations, a whole litany of things that had to occur for us to get where we're at today. And hopefully, we're out of the woods, because at any moment in time, anybody could have a lawsuit or something like that, and all of a sudden, to a certain degree, we're back to the drawing board. But it looks like we're out of the woods right now, and I just wanted to say thank you to Janice Han for showing her leadership and paying attention to the community of Wilmington and the will and the willingness to go ahead and challenge the system and say this community doesn't have big superstars and movie stars living there. They just have a bunch of common folk. Hope you appreciate, I don't mean it in a bad way, I mean it in a complimentary way. People are just hard-working people who just want to get along and get by and get a little respect. And I just want to thank Janice Han for her leadership and all the other good people who helped pull this together to where we're at today. This is a huge, huge, major deal. This is a major, major issue. Took a lot of work, a lot of legal terms to get through to get where we're at today, and I don't think we should let this go by without acknowledging that there are a lot of good people who made this happen, people from the community, management at the port, big corporations who are willing to bend a little bit, organizations like DWP willing to say, okay, we'll move out of the way if we have to, things of that nature. Took a lot of good people to make this happen, but it took the leadership of Janice Han to say it can happen, and the community saying it must happen, and here we are. Congratulations.
Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to also join with what Councilman Cardenas just said. You know, it's interesting, colleagues, when you go to some of the cities around the country, from my former great city of Cleveland, Ohio, you look at Miami, Baltimore, Seattle, as you travel around the country, you see the way cities utilize their waterfronts. And some of the cities that have not been able to have the sort of the luxurious climate that we have here in Southern California, yet they do such a superior job of taking advantage of the waterfront. City of Cleveland, which was bankrupt at one point, if you go to downtown Cleveland right now and you look at what they've done to reinvigorate that area with the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, the whole waterfront, the boardwalk, you see the same thing with Baltimore, with ESPN Zone. And when you look at this here, colleagues, at the potential to really make that same type of footprint here in Los Angeles, it's hard not to be totally excited about this as an opportunity. Nothing to take away from Venice Beach, it is in and of itself its own type of visitor destination. But what this would actually offer, from looking at this, is a real vision for families here in Los Angeles that aren't looking just for the tourist type of a scene, but they're actually looking for a place to go out and dine and have a real experience as they try to socialize and enjoy the better parts of Los Angeles. And then to know what you're proposing to take where we are right now in this area and to turn it into something, as I see on this document, is just literally visionary, and it's so exciting. And so I joined with Councilman Cardenas in praising all the community people that really helped make this happen, leadership at the port, Councilmember Han. This is exciting, and I only wish that I could be on the council when this is actually built, but I will go there as a proud Angelino, because I know it's going to take a while to build this, but this is really exciting. Congratulations.
Mr. Zain?
Thank you, Mr. President. Janice, I know you've got great vision for the harbor, for Harbor Gateway, for Wilmington, for that whole community you represent. I was recently in Chicago and saw how their waterfront is, thousands of people going down there. I was recently in Long Beach, where they have their commercial area, and go to Marina Del Rey, and you look at what we have in the city of Los Angeles, that area that you represent, that has gone through a lot of decay, and the community wants to see it improved, totally support it. That should be a point where people from this region take their families, go out to dinner, enjoy the activities, help the economy down there, help the community down there, improve the property values down there. You can still have a functioning port where you now have the ships that plug in instead of spewing their diesel fuel into the community and have it a vibrant area. But when I went to Chicago and saw how much activity was along the waterfront, that it was clean and beautiful and improved, and people were really enjoying that opportunity. And we think that we have a real jewel down in that harbor that has really, for many years, gone through decay. I know the trolley that you have running down there now and bringing those aspects back to our vital port of Los Angeles. You can share commercial, residential, and have it as a focal point of activity. So I strongly support that. I know that your vision for that has been a long time, and to get to this process and the folks that came up and drove the 110 freeway through the traffic, found your parking, got here at ten o'clock and wonder why isn't the council in session. Hopefully, you're notified we started late today. But to all of you, congratulations for the success of this, and this helps not only your community, but this helps all of Los Angeles as a point where people will want to go and venture. So congratulations to all, and to you, Janice, for what you've done. Thank you.
Mr. Carden?
Thank you, Mr. President. Janice Han gets things done. She absolutely does, and I know that this is the beginning, but I know how hard the community has worked on this. We were very proud to be with you that day when you were the first certified neighborhood council in the city of Los Angeles to have our first offsite for this class of council members. The first offsite council meeting was down there, and we spent some time there. You know, shame on us if we turn our back to our own history in Wilmington, and I think what we have here is something that not only, Mr. Ludlow, can we do this while you're still a councilmember, I think we have put in place some mechanisms to be able to do that, some land trust that I discussed with Councilmember Han, to be able to put that in perpetuity for the community. The Neighborhood Land Trust is something that we, with help of Councilwoman Sikowski who initiated it, we're able to put in place that's up and running now to allow communities to take back parcels of land and to put them in trust, not held by the city, not held by any individuals or private entities, but by the people. And this is a great example of how we can make that happen and use that as a mechanism to continue to green the area. But congratulations to everybody who's worked so hard. We know it's not done. We're not patting ourselves on the back that suddenly there's green space there, but this is a dramatic step forward, and I want to thank the port for stepping up, and I encourage the commissioners, the Harvard Commissioners, to do the right thing, to join with Janice, to do the right thing, to make sure this happens, and congratulations, Janice Han, it's wonderful.
Ms. Han to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, first of all, let me thank those of my colleagues who took the opportunity to stand up and say something. I think that's important for all of our different communities that we represent. Sometimes, I think all of our communities sometimes feel like this body as a whole doesn't always pay attention to everybody's needs, so I appreciate it, and I meant a lot, I think, to my community to hear you stand up and say, Tony, this is a big deal. I appreciate you saying that, and I appreciate you seeing that. This is a big deal, and colleagues, I hope you heard things like, this community has had a Hundred Years' War with the Port of Los Angeles. When I came into office three years ago, that was the climate. In fact, it was a climate where both Wilmington and San Pedro actually wanted to seep from the city because they were so unhappy and because they had felt so much like here they lived next to this entity that contributes billions of dollars to our economy, billions of dollars, and yet these communities, particularly Wilmington, felt like it was the ugly stepchild. And in fact, every expansion that the port had just meant that it was more trampling on their community, on their way of life, on their clean air, on their roads that are crumbled on a daily basis by these trucks. So this is a big deal. This is huge. And I think what you also heard is what I've also said, and Dennis, that's exactly what you said. We can have it both. We can have the economic engine called the Port of Los Angeles, but we can also have communities that don't have to have their quality of life snuffed out. We can have it both, and we proved that when we plugged in that ship from China Shipping last week. That's what proved our point. You don't have to make the choice between economic development and clean air. We do not need to make that choice. And what this does particularly is this buffer zone is so critical to this community. This really will say, hey, there is a difference. There is the industry, and then there's a beautiful residential community of Wilmington. There needs to be separation. There needs to be a way that is very clear-cut, what is port operations and what is a thriving community where kids are playing, kids are going to school, and seniors are living a life that everyone deserves. So the waterfront development, giving Wilmington access to its waterfront, creating a commercial retail area, is also a dream that many people from Wilmington had for a very long time. I feel lucky to represent Wilmington. I feel lucky that I was able to really just really hook up to their dreams, hook up to their years of working in the trenches and their years of advocating for their community. I came along at a good time to help make this a reality. What I would like for us to do today, colleagues, is not just note and file this, but out of our committee came a recommendation that the Harbor Commission support in concept this plan, and I think that will be an important part of what we do today, is encouraging the Harbor Commission to support this concept at their next meeting. So I hope you'll support me on that. Thank you for all of you who came down here to City Hall. It does make a difference. Your voices are heard. We're very proud of Wilmington for all that you've done.
Thank you, Ms. Han. And on Ms. Han's motion, Madam Kirk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Okay. Colleagues, I've had another couple of requests to take matters out of order, but before we do that, we now have twelve members present, and we have a number of ordinances being held on the desk. Madam Kirk, we think we can move forward with items one, two, three, four, five, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, twenty-two, twenty-three.
And twenty-five.
And twenty-five. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. We now go next to item seventy-seven, which is an urgency item, and there has been cooperation by members of the public here to speak to narrow down the number of public speakers to just a couple, and they'll proceed with the votes. And colleagues, item seventy-four and seventy-five, which can be taken concurrently, will come next. Let's open the public comment period then for item seventy-seven and call forward Rob Glushan, followed by Mark Newman, Kuzel, Bruce Kay, and Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Good morning, councilmembers. It's good to be here. Nothing is more important to the people that live in your district than the neighborhoods they live in. This neighborhood, several hundred strong, has been battling for the past six to twelve months, some overdevelopment in their community that is totally out of scale, totally incompatible with the mixture of single-family and low-rise multifamily units in this area, which is Melrose, Pico area, Fifth Council District. For most of these people, this is their first experience dealing with City Hall, and for them, notwithstanding some of the incompatible development that's gone up, fortunately, it's an example of how City Hall can be responsive. And... gone up, fortunately, it's an example of how City Hall can be responsive. And Councilman Weiss, on behalf of the United Neighbors for Responsible Development, we want to thank you not only for sponsoring this ICO, but moving it so quickly through this process, your staff, Renee Scalacci, and the Planning Department, who I know is here today to answer any questions. The community is represented here today by a number of people who've cut down the speakers. But we do hope, councilmembers, that you join with Councilmember Weiss to adopt this ICO and help preserve this very special community in the 5th Council District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Newman-Kuzel, and I'm president of the United Neighbors for Responsible Development, UNRD. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Councilmember Weiss and Planning Deputy Renee Scalacci for giving our neighborhood hope that things can actually move through and quickly and efficiently when interests are common. For specifics, our neighborhood actually is the area that comprises La Cienega, Crescent Heights, Melrose, and Santa Monica. I've been a resident, as have the several hundred members of our organization, for many years, many decades. And we just want to stress the importance of the ICO, the interim control ordinance, with regard to the runaway development that's come into our neighborhood, affected our historic footprint. The architectural integrity of the neighborhood has been compromised. We have outside developers, other people, land developers, who have no idea what the UNRD and its neighborhood's all about, from the children running up and down the streets with their parents, to people such as myself walking their dogs, to the elderly who have grown up, gone to Fairfax High School, and had planned to retire in a nice greenbelt area with blue skies and not a lot of traffic and not a lot of crime. Unfortunately, that has changed. Buildings have been built above and beyond what the codes and setback laws are supposed to be. And Councilman Weiss and Planning Deputy Scalacci have come in, helped us change things, and we thank you for voting unanimously, we hope, for the ICO.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, and I'm very concerned about the new rules and regulations concerning landlords and his building permits. I'm very concerned about how a building can be turned in a Section 8 building where we are moving in a building that is basically not Section 8, and where it can be turned into a convalescent home. I'm very concerned about, before moving, before we pay our first and last month rent, that it be clear to the tenant concerning what kind of building it is with the rules and regulations given to the tenant before move-in. Also concerning the unfairness of the permits and the rules and regulations of the owner, of the manager of the building. I'm also very concerned of the move-in price concerning the first and last month rent. Once we pay the first and last month rent, and now we make a decision to stay, which is the tenant, will we have to take away deduction concerning deposit, concerning cleanup fees, concerning no money back because it was in the rules and regulations that we did not receive as tenants?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Kay.
Bruce Kay, speaking in favor of the interim control ordinance. Councilmembers, Los Angeles has been blessed and cursed by its landscape, its weather, and its history. Its desert landscape, seemingly endless and endlessly available, has inhibited the development of a dense urban plan. Its weather has encouraged an out-of-doors lifestyle, where the relationship between home and garden is symbiotic in practice and in spirit. Yet, this unique, low-density, garden-style city, whose history is measured in decades, not centuries, is revising its social compact and drawing its plot maps at a feverish pace. How long will it be before the Los Angeles that beckoned us and captivated us is but a memory? While it is in the nature of every city to transform itself over time, every city has a certain character that transcends the uncertainties of time. Yet, our beautiful, familiar neighborhood, established some 80 years ago, has in just a few short years become unfamiliar to our eyes and our senses and made us strangers in our own homes. Led by an unscrupulous group of uncaring land speculators and developers, new buildings no longer conform to the historic footprint of our neighborhood, and valuable, beautiful greenbelts have been paved over thoughtlessly. We urge this council to approve the ICO before you so that a new vision for habitable urban environment with community input can be formulated, where the old is blended with the new, and a green space means something more than a wilting daisy in a window box. Thank you, Councilman Weiss, and to your outstanding staff for supporting this important ordinance.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, for allowing us to take this out of order. And thanks to the folks who came from the neighborhood for condensing who we've got so that we can move the council meeting along. I'm really impressed, not just by what you said today, but by what you guys have done over the past several months. But know that what you said today mattered. My friend here, Mr. Zein, who represents the western, southwestern portion of the San Fernando Valley, he was just telling me about how he grew up in part in that neighborhood, and he's owned homes in that neighborhood. He's very familiar with what it looks like. And you've made an impact on him when you start to talk about how your neighborhood is changing. You've done everything the right way, and I just want to tell you what a pleasure it's been to work with all of you and to finally bring this ICO before the council. Your counsel, Mr. Glushan, has done a superb job in framing the issues, in finding the right solutions. And I look forward to working with him and you in the next several months as we go through the planning process in that area. And you're well aware of what I'm talking about, when we try to come up with a more reasonable and strike a better balance when it comes to any future development that may be permitted to occur in your neighborhood. Planning Department has staff here, really appreciate everything you've done and the city attorney's office did to expedite this and get it going, because time really is of the essence. It has been of the essence for longer than we would all like to admit. But we know you had to work hard to bring this before us, and we really do appreciate what you did. And I finally want to say thank you to all of you for mentioning my Deputy Chief of Staff, Renee Scalacci, who's worked so hard for your neighborhood. I'm really pleased that we're going to be adopting this ICO today. And I just look forward, over the next several months, to working with all of you and everyone else in the neighborhood and trying to put the brakes on these problems. Colleagues, I'll just tell you, you should see, they could do a real mean PowerPoint presentation for you in terms of before and after, in terms of, you know, the classic, single-family and Spanish duplex style that you have in this neighborhood, and then the giant stucco box going up next door looming over all of it in a part of town which is really quite dense already, where traffic on Melrose and Beverly and La Cienega, all of you know, because you probably have dinner in my district every once in a while. It's already pretty tough to get through that part of town. Thank you all for your efforts. Colleagues, I urge and I vote. Thank you again, Mr. President, for allowing us to take this out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Zein.
I wasn't going to speak on this item, but I'm compelled to because my brother may be watching, and he complains to me that the development taking place, he lives on Orlando, and I grew up on Edinburgh, and you know that area. Clearly, it's changed, and it's driven a lot of people away. So I commend my colleague, Jack Weiss, for bringing this forward, and the community, and Rob Glushan, who I served on Charter Commission with, for being involved in this. I have one question. Willoughby is the dividing line between West Hollywood and the city of Los Angeles. Are we getting cooperation from the city of West Hollywood? Because that border between Willoughby and Santa Monica, we've got a lot of those homes. I remember King's Road, when it used to be beautiful homes, and now it's all multiple dwellings. And I know that happened on Islington Croft and the other streets, the north-south corridor. Are we finding cooperation from our neighbor city, West Hollywood, at the dividing line of Willoughby? I would ask that question. Since from Melrose to Santa Monica, it's one big block, the architecture, the dwellings, the senior citizens, the whole assortment that reside in that community, we'd like to preserve that whole box if we could, from Melrose to Santa Monica, and not say from Willoughby north to Santa Monica, you'd have all those beautiful structures removed and coming with the multiple dwellings. So I don't know, Rob, if, it's not the point of a debate, but I hope they would cooperate with that to keep that style in place in the adjoining community as it divides at Willoughby Avenue. I grew up in that area, as I stated. I had paper route in that area, and I remember the flavor of that community and those old homes, and they're very precious homes. And I see what's coming in there now with these huge monstrosities of projects driving all that away. So congratulations. Very strong supporter. And to Jack Weiss, thank you for preserving that. What's the last of a living legend neighborhood of Hollywood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. So no other speakers wishing to be heard at this time. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. And colleagues, as I mentioned earlier, the next items we'll take up are item 74 and 75. Let me recognize, Mr. Carden, as Chair of the Commerce Committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Do we have DWP available for presentation? Department of Water and Power, are they here for presentation? We're taking 74 and 75 out of order.
They are here. Let's give them a minute to come to the table.
Might have cut them off guard a little bit. They were...
Let me also ask, as they come forward, the clerk to read a community impact statement that has been filed.
The community impact statement was submitted by the governing board of the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council, and they recommend that the mayor and the city council mandate that by 2010, 20% of the energy provided by the DWP to the city of Los Angeles come from clean renewable energy sources. We further recommend that this 20% standard be met only with renewable energy technologies such as wind, solar, geothermal, biomass, fuel cells, and small hydro as defined by California state law.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We have members of the Department of Water and Power here today, and they're going to give a brief, brief overview of the presentation that they made. Actually, they made the presentation twice to the Commerce Committee, and we now have this on the floor of the council. We've come a long way. I'll reserve my comments for after the presentation, but please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. I am Frank Solis, the acting general manager at Water and Power. With me this afternoon is Bob Rozanski, our Assistant Chief Financial Officer, and Henry Martinez, our Chief Operating Officer for Power. On behalf of the Department of Water and Power, I am very pleased to introduce our proposed renewable portfolio standard. The proposal before you today represents a roadmap. I think our council president described it as his roadmap at one of the committee hearings, on a proposed plan to increase the renewable energy delivered by the Department of Water and Power by 20%, to 20% by the year 2017. It's a living document. It'll be adjusted and improved as we get additional feedback and input from the various stakeholders. For example, we have already added interim goals of 13% renewable by 2010. For discussion purposes, we have excluded large hydro, such as Hoover, from our baseline. We've developed a communication plan with the neighborhood councils. We're working with labor to identify sites here in the basin that are suitable for development of renewable projects. With that as a backdrop, I'd like to ask Bob to quickly give you an overview of the proposal before you today.
Okay, thank you, Frank. By now, hopefully, everybody has a copy of the presentation. On page one is just an agenda that we plan to follow today. First item would be to talk about the overall goals of the program, give you an idea of what the eligible renewable resources might be, discuss the mechanism for recovering renewable costs, talk about the financial impact on retail customers, the process that the department is proposing to use to procure renewables, and then what our next steps are. On page two, again, Frank had mentioned that we have established initially here a goal of 13% by 2010, and then 20% by 2017. That represents about 1% each year. And our plan is to integrate renewables into our retail energy mix without compromising system reliability and to procure renewable energy costs for either ownership... Yes, excuse me.
Bob, forgive me, but we have a lot of viewers outside this building who are watching this presentation, and obviously affects them. If they're in the city of Los Angeles, they're customers of the Department of Water and Power. Could you briefly, in layman's terms, tell us what renewable portfolio standard is and give a couple of examples of what a renewable energy source would be that people might be familiar with or might jog their memory?
Right. Within the state, there's a law that was passed a few years ago for the investor-owned utilities. And that law establishes a goal of having 20% of the energy that's produced and sold to the retail customers come from renewable resources. Renewable resources are the types of technologies such as solar power, hydroelectric power under the state law, 30 megawatts or less. It's a smaller hydro. Basically, these are sustainable types of investments, and it moves, it would move the investor-owned utilities and, as we're proposing, the department, away from fossil fuels to a certain extent. And so that's basically what the renewable portfolio standard is all about. The Department of Water and Power was exempted under that state law. We have a different situation, and we were afforded an opportunity to design a program that best met the city and department's needs, given the resources and the financial structure that we have in place. Another goal would be to mitigate the financial impact on retail customers, ensure that our financial integrity is maintained, and to continue to encourage voluntary contributions from our customers to fund renewable resources. On page three, this is a list of eligible resources that's being proposed: hydroelectric power, biomass, digester gas, waste gas, landfill gas, solar thermal, geothermal, photovoltaic, such as solar power, fuel cells with renewable fuels, ocean wave technologies, wind power, and other renewables that may come up over time. On page four, this chart represents sort of an overall roadmap as to where we are today and where we need to be by 2017 to achieve the 20% proposed goal. As you can see by the chart, today, if you only include the small, DWP's small hydro, and you look at what we've committed, such as a wind power project as well as a biomass project, we have roughly 6% renewables going forward. What that means is that we need to add an additional 14% between now and 2017 to achieve the 20% goal. On page five, generally speaking, renewable energy is more costly than conventional technology or conventional energy. And so what the department is proposing is to establish a surcharge, a recovery mechanism, such that the department could recover the difference between the cost of renewable energy and the cost that DWP could avoid by not generating electricity using fossil fuels from its own resources. And some of the costs that would be eligible for recovery include interconnection costs, cost to hook up to the transmission lines, transmission costs to bring the power to Los Angeles, including any losses that are incurred, the renewables procurement and administrative costs, and of course, the difference between the cost of the renewable and the savings that we have from not generating electricity on our own. Generally, we would propose to establish strong financial controls and limits on the maximum surcharge that could be billed to customers, as well as a maximum increase on a year-to-year basis. What is being proposed is a level of seven cents, up to seven cents, being paid for renewable energy costs. And the surcharge would be limited to a one-tenth of one cent increase per year, and cumulative, to the extent that we were to pay the entire seven cents for all 20%, or, excuse me, the incremental 14% of the... all twenty percent, or excuse me, the incremental fourteen percent of the additional renewable resources that are required to get to the twenty percent. The maximum surcharge would be roughly point six one cents per kilowatt hour, or about six tenths of a cent. Doesn't make sense to most customers, but I'll translate that into dollars and cents on a monthly bill in a moment. And the final item is that we plan to not have the surcharge billed for the first three years, so that the first time that it would go into place would be July 1st of 2007. On page seven, or excuse me, page six, this gives you an idea. There's three lines on this chart, and the purple line represents if we were to pay five cents per kilowatt hours for renewables, what would be the maximum surcharge to get twenty percent by 2017? And you can see that it would be somewhere in the twenty-four, twenty-five cents, point, excuse me, a quarter of a cent roughly per kilowatt hour. And the reason that this line is here is because this is about what we paid for the wind power as well as biomass projects that we're involved in. The yellow line represents sort of a benchmark that was used by the investor-owned utilities in terms of what they thought the cost of renewables might be. And that was five point three seven five cents per kilowatt hour, and as you can see, that represents a little over a third of a cent per kilowatt hour over the life of this program. And then what the department is proposing, of course, is based on the seven cents per kilowatt hour, and that comes to roughly six tenths of a cent maximum by 2017. On page seven, this chart shows what the projected bill impact would be for a typical, well, I don't want to say a typical, I'll say an average residential customer. And you can see at the five cent range, the purple line there, that it would come to by 2017, if we paid five cents per kilowatt hour for all of the renewable energy, it would come to roughly a dollar forty per month. Typical bill is probably in, an average bill is typically in the fifty-dollar range.
Bill, Bob, excuse me, if you don't mind, I'd like to point out, these numbers might seem a little different for you at home because we get billed every other month, correct?
That's correct.
So the average, the average bill that you see is about a hundred or so dollars that you see on every other month, but when you break it down on a monthly basis, it comes out to about fifty-plus dollars, about fifty-two, fifty-three dollars. And according to your chart here, Bob, about five years from today, if we start putting cleaner energy online according to the estimates that in your presentation, it's going to change people's bill on a monthly basis by about a buck at worst-case scenario, right? Based on your projections. So in other words, they're going to see on their, their bill that comes out every two months, they're really going to see maybe a two-dollar difference on a two-month basis when they, when they get their bill to have cleaner energy, to have cleaner air, to have, not only here in Los Angeles, because quite frankly, Bob, we don't just get our energy from here in L.A. Some of it comes from out of state, some of it comes from Northern California, it comes from different parts to bring the electricity here to Los Angeles, correct?
That's correct. The average residential bill would go up roughly two dollars every two months.
Correct. Thank you.
And then you can see it would, over through 2017, the maximum cap that we've set, based on that seven cents per kilowatt hour, would come to roughly three dollars and twenty cents per month, or six forty every two months as billed to the residential customer. Just by way of example, for the small, for the average commercial customer, to put that into perspective, the bill today is roughly five hundred, four seventy a month, roughly. And that bill would go up by about thirty-five dollars per month. On the next page, on page eight, this is a chart that shows the projected average retail electric rate. The blue bars represent the frozen electric rate structure that we have in place. The department's rates are frozen in place today. And as you can see, in 2008, there's a red cap on top of the blue bar. That represents the surcharge, the renewable surcharge to have clean energy. As you go forward in 2011, there's a small strip in between the red and the blue that represents a projected base rate increase beginning in 2011 through 2017. Our rates have been frozen in place since 1998. We haven't had a base rate increase since 1992 on the electric side, and this may not be exactly the size, the correct size of what's anticipated, or the timing may change based on actuals coming into play as we get closer. On the next page, page nine, the department plans to use a request for proposal process to procure renewables for ownership and/or purchase, and the plan is to evaluate and rank the responses to the proposals based on specific parameters involving the relative financial impacts, the technology involved, risks associated with them, the impact on system reliability, the access to transmission, environmental-related impacts, if any, and the impact on the local economy and jobs. The department has an Energy Services Risk Policy Committee in place. The plan is to have that group, along with possibly other groups, evaluate the responses to the RFP and make recommendations to the department's general manager for submission to the Board of Water and Power Commissioners for consideration. The department's also proposing to subject the RPS surcharge to an independent annual compliance audit to ensure that all the requirements are being met. In summary, the department has a goal of thirteen percent renewables by 2010 and twenty percent by 2017. The proposal's to have a cap established at seven cents per kilowatt hour, the maximum charge or amount that we would pay for renewables. There is an escalation factor. We've used a fixed escalation factor of one and a half percent per year. That would bring the future cost of that seven cents up to about eight point three seven cents per kilowatt hour in 2017. That the surcharge would only be used to recover the costs that exceed DWP's generation costs. In other words, the plan is not to double count or double bill, but to give credit to customers any costs that we do not incur as a result of procuring the renewables. And again, the Energy Services Risk Policy Committee would be responsible for making recommendations, and the Board of Water and Power Commissioners would receive the proposals for consideration. On page eleven, this summarizes our next steps. The plan is to issue an initial renewables request proposal in June. That leaves roughly one day. We expect to get it out tomorrow, but in the next week for sure, and begin soliciting feedback from key stakeholders in July. That would include the Green Ribbon Commission, city officials, labor unions, the environmental community, the business community, neighborhood councils, et cetera. We plan to complete the initial evaluation of the RFP responses sometime in October of this year, and then finalize the RPS proposal based on feedback that we get from the outreach process that we plan to undertake beginning next month. We plan to complete that by November, and then, of course, based on the process that we went through and was proposed for the water rate increase, the department plans also to subject the RPS surcharge to an independent third-party review prior to finalizing it. And then in the January 2005 timeframe, we plan to be, to have the ordinance drafted, submitted to the board and city council for consideration, and then begin awarding renewables contracts. With that, that concludes our presentation. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to respond.
Yes, Bob, I'd like to ask you a question, just so the public gets an understanding of the magnitude of what we're dealing with. It's my understanding the Department of Water and Power is the largest power authority in the country that's owned by the, by a city or a county, right? A municipal authority. So we're the biggest in the country, okay? And biggest meaning their second place is like way far behind us when it, when it comes to the scope of responsibility and how large their power requirements are. So in other words, we're pretty big. We get a lot of attention when we go out and put on an RFP, and which is my second point I'd like to ask you. These RFPs, potentially, we could be considering buying energy like on an annual basis that costs about how much dollars, a million dollars, ten million dollars, or more? What, give me an example.
Yeah, if you were to take, just to put it in perspective, if you were to take the seven cent, if you paid seven cents per kilowatt hour for renewables and you hit the maximum over time, the cumulative annual additional cost would be roughly a hundred and sixty-three million.
That's the difference?
And that's achieving, that would be the incremental difference, and that's achieving an increment of roughly fourteen percent. So it looks like it's about twelve or thirteen million for every one percent increase on average, if at seven cents.
So technically speaking, for one percent more in renewable energy, based on the energy that we put out on a daily basis on your average day, how much, how much is that in dollars that we have to go buy that energy or produce it ourselves or what have you? Give me an example.
Well, if you look at it from...
Not the difference, just the whole seven cents or five cents or whatever comes up here.
Okay, so that, that would probably be, probably, I'm going to say it's probably around thirty or forty. That represents about thirty or forty percent increase over what it would otherwise cost us to generate, given today's natural gas prices. So we're generating at, at four and a half cents roughly per kilowatt hour on a system average basis, and that's about, I'll say, a billion dollars a year, just on four and a half cents. So that would be roughly three hundred million.
So three hundred million dollars.
Two to three hundred million, somewhere in that range.
The reason why I wanted to make sure that we, we express to the public what we're dealing with here, this is not, this is not funny business, this is not simple math. This isn't just easy things to say, okay, we're going to buy this energy, buy that energy. This is something that takes a lot of thought into it, and something that we haven't talked about that I need, we have to bring on the table here is something called reliability. For example, you can buy energy to put under our system and run it down the line so that somebody can flick their switch at home or run their bakery shop or what have you here in Los Angeles, and the bottom line is not all of that energy is available at noon in the middle of the day, and not all of that energy is available at midnight. So there's all kinds of other factors that we have to take into account when, when you buy energy, when you make those decisions. Reliability is very important, and let me express how important that is. You have a person at home, they are, say, bedridden, and they have some equipment monitoring their house, say it's a person who's a senior, and they're by themselves, and what happens if the power goes out? They could lose their life. I mean, these are serious, serious issues. So reliability is something that we pay for, something that we take into account, and in some cases, we actually pay a premium for that. Paying a premium is a fancy way of saying, just pay more money to make sure we get it. So those are the kinds of factors that aren't explicit in this report, and fortunately, you do your job very well, DWP, that you kind of take that for granted, that you've already taken that into account. I just want to express for the public that these are the kinds of decisions that are going on in this decision for us to have cleaner energy for the people of Los Angeles and cleaner energy throughout the Western United States, because that's where we get all of our energy from.
Mr. Cardenas, can I ask you to sum up or push your button again?
Okay, I'll sum up two things. Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to thank the CLA for their report earlier in the year, which was the basis for where we're at today. There have been many changes, and the blueprint coming out of the Department of Water and Power is somewhat different from that report, but yet at the same time, I want to thank the CLA for making that the impetus of where we're at today. They put out that report some months ago, and with that, I'd like to say we should note and file item number seventy-five. Also, I'd like to clarify that we do not need to complicate this process any more than it already is. The blueprint that you gave us, these numbers of June of 2004 through February 2005, I hope and expect that we do follow that through. We've had this in committee here, we've discussed it in council. Now hopefully, we'll see the Board of Commissioners of the Department of Water and Power taking this up and not wasting any time to make sure that we answer the call of the public, and that is, we want cleaner energy and we need it soon. So I'll push my button again, but thank you so far for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for your leadership. This is something that is complicated, and I appreciate DWP laying out our options very clearly, and, you know, and we talked about the statewide position that we are going to take on whether or not we accept a state legislation that would mandate this renewable energy. I appreciate what DWP said, and we've all taken you on your word, and you've delivered in terms of being able to support something and to lay out for all of us what those options are and what they mean. And we know that there are financial consequences both directions. We talked about this before, there's a cost of living cheap, of paying for cheaper energy. There is a cost that comes with that. At the same time, we know there's certainly a cost that comes with renewable energy and additional costs that may be there. But on balance, as Mr. Cardenas stated, what we're looking for in terms of long-term health and long-term direction and to making sure we lead the way, not just in terms of creating a healthier Los Angeles and a healthier Western region, but also that we lead the region and ideally the country and world in ways of pioneering the renewable industries that can be such a part of what this initiative does. I wanted to thank a number of people, Glenn Dako, my staff, who spent a lot of time on this. I want to thank him for his good, hard work on this, Mayor's Office, Don Lou, and Tanya DeRie as well. I also think that there's a couple of things that, and I talked with Mr. Cardenas about this, I'd like to add an amendment, I'd like to second his motion, but I'd like to also add an amendment that when DWP reports back to council with an RPS that includes renewable power procurement process that evaluates and ranks proposals, that we add the impact on local economy and jobs as well. We held a hearing on this in my committee, Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee. We've seen in the solar industry how important this is. We have become one of the solar clusters for photovoltaic production in the world. We can kind of take that leadership, work closely with some of our union representatives and others to make sure that these are good, high-paying jobs that stay here and come to Los Angeles. I know Mr. Reyes has talked about this in some of the industrial areas near the L.A. River, that we could actually build some sort of industrial park that clusters clean and green industries and keeps those jobs here as, I think all of us agree in this room today, that those industries are not going backwards, but throughout the world, these are going to be growth industries, and it really behooves us to be at the forefront of that. I also want to thank a lot of the advocates who really pushed all of us to do better, to be greener, to be smarter, to be healthier, and to think about this intelligently, not just to put on our narrow blinders about what the bottom line is today, but to make sure that we aren't saving money here and wondering why the asthma and the cancer rates and everything else in the city get to be as bad as they are, but that we really invest in making sure that we get a bottom line of both responsible energy and good health for everybody. So thank you again, Mr. Cardenas, for the good work that you've done on this. Mr. Padilla as well has been really a leading voice, and I know there's a number of folks who are interested in this, but I think today we are making history. I don't know how many people who are watching out there on Channel 35 realize actually what's going to happen, but you're going to see all, especially folks who have signed up for Green Power, you're going to see the final delivery of Green Power production from your DWP as well, something that we've made tremendous strides on already, and DWP has done some of the most innovative programs for that in the country, but we are going to deliver it in a way that I think will leave in some ways the private sector behind. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And colleagues, want to thank the department sitting in front of us for their work on this issue for the last several months. As you know, we've been deliberating on this particular issue and this particular goal for the last couple of years now, and even though, you know, solar photovoltaic and solar thermal and biomass and all these words that describe specific and emerging technologies may sound complicated, don't underestimate the significance of the step we are taking today. Don't underestimate the significance of the step we're taking today, because as we've discussed previously here, the state now has these standards applying to investor-owned utilities. Rightfully so, municipal utilities have been exempt from state regulation because of local control arguments, not exempt because of the insignificance or significance of taking these steps for our environment and for these emerging technologies. And so recognizing the challenge that to avoid being dictated to in the future, we had to take significant steps on our own, and today we're taking those significant steps to, to move the Department of Water and Power off of coal and other... To move the Department of Water and Power off of coal and other dirty technologies and in a direction of cleaner technologies is nothing short of historic. But the roadmap, this is what I call it, colleagues, the proposal before us is a roadmap, it's a framework for getting there, truly balances not only this council's policy goals, but also the core mission of the Department of Water and Power. It is a way to improve lives and establish long-range power generation balancing fuel diversity, energy efficiency, and our objectives, along with making sure that we have a safe, reliable, and low-cost energy system that services the residents and the businesses of Los Angeles. So this is the roadmap for getting there. This is an excellent framework. A couple of comments to specific elements of the framework. I know we're establishing, I guess, a temporary goal or cap of seven cents per kilowatt hour. I think it's only appropriate that be revisited, not only upon the issuance of the RFP, but upon the receipts of specific proposals, to see if there's an appropriate flexibility there for it to make sense. Finally, just want to comment on the, I guess you've established sort of the interim goals as well. It's not just a 20 percent by 2017, but you outlined the specific goals of where we should be by 2010 and other points along the way to make sure we're on track and not leaving it all for the day before the term papers due, if you know what I mean. Finally, want to comment on the role of the union because I was impressed to see our partners in the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Union representing DWP's employees at the table wanting to be a part of this because they see not only the environmental and health gains to be achieved by this, but also the quality job opportunities, economic development opportunities that could be achieved through the pursuit of a renewable portfolio standard. And finally, just one quick question for the department at the table because Mr. Cardenas referenced to our strength as a municipal utility throughout the country. As far as you know, are there other municipal utilities that have adopted a renewable portfolio standard?
Yes, they are. City of Austin specifically adopted the renewable portfolio standard about six to eight months ago. They made a commitment to, again, the city's very smaller than LA, but they have adopted a full policy.
And do you know what their standard or goal is?
I believe it's, I can't speak, but I can provide the report. I have a copy in my office, but at some point in the neighborhood of 10 to 15 percent renewables.
That'd be great to know. And clearly, Austin is not a small city, but it's certainly not as big as the city of Los Angeles. So colleagues, today, you can all stand proud and say, we have cast a vote for Los Angeles to be the largest municipal utility in the country in adopting the most aggressive renewable portfolio standard of any other municipal utility in the country. This is an RFP that will bring back the proposals by specific companies, specific technologies that'll help us get there. And putting that right combination together will help us achieve those goals in part of the consideration and, as close to this, Madam Chair, in the final adoption of specific proposals is not just a cent per kilowatt hour, but as the Garcetti motion that has gone through the Housing Committee and the Commerce Committee points out, it's fair consideration of the job opportunity and economic development opportunities, not just for the solar photovoltaic that's outlined in the motion, but for all the technologies that fall within our definition of renewables. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We are at 10 members, colleagues, and we are in danger with an excused absence that was put before us of losing a 10th member. So if we can perhaps move this along quickly so that we don't lose quorum, we have Ms. Gruel next, Ms. Hahn, and then Mr. Cardenas for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and I will be brief. And thank you, the DWP, for being here today. We had just a few weeks ago an item of state legislation that would have required this. And I think many of us felt that might keep our feet to the fire, but, and thank the leadership of Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Padilla and others on this council that said that we feel it is important to have renewable portfolio standards that we can look at. And colleagues, what we're talking about is really our future and looking towards the future, ensuring that we have as much renewable energy as possible. And we have to set those goals and put our own feet to the fire. And I think what we found here today is that we are capable of doing that. We will continue to watch ourselves to ensure, and again, I know that we have only 10 members, I will not talk much longer about this, but stand in support and remind all of those of you that are here in the seats today, in the pews, to keep our feet to the fire and remind us you have been a wonderful resource, a wonderful reminder of what we need to do. And just to say thank you to all of you for doing that as well. So I know this will go by quickly and let's get to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Colleagues, I too just want to rise in support of the hard work that I know DWP has been doing on this issue. And clearly, as my colleague Wendy said, there was legislation out there that sort of became the threat, became the hammer, and most of us did not want to spend any energy, pardon the pun, on opposing that legislation because in concept, that is exactly right. I mean, it's exactly right for utilities all up and down the state of California to adopt a very strong renewable portfolio standard. But it's a better idea for us to put forward our own. It's a better idea for us to craft one that works for us, that is viable, that is reliable, that is financially feasible. It's a much better idea for us to have, and the owners of DWP, which are the taxpayers of Los Angeles, to be a part of this. And that's what I wanted to say, is the other partner that I appreciate is going to be the neighborhood councils. And I'm very pleased to see that you are listening, that you are paying attention, and that you have actually revised your schedule for this by getting input from the stakeholders in the beginning of this process. And I venture to say that at the end of the day, it will be our neighborhood councils who, when they are educated, when they are talked to as partners, when they are made aware of what this means for us, what this means for our future, and how they can help achieve it, they will be our strongest allies for this proposal when it is finally in its formal, in its final draft. So I appreciate you getting them involved earlier. I think that's important, not only for this, but I think getting neighborhood councils involved in everything DWP is doing early on is really, at the end of the day, going to be better for all of us. They are the owners of this company. They are the investors. So thank you for that.
Mr. Cardenas.
I just want to make sure we put into perspective that other corporations around the state of California who provide energy have actually moved their portfolio standards as we're talking about ours here today. But legislation is really what caused much of that. And we have been threatened by Sacramento saying that if we don't do this ourselves, that they'll impose it upon us. And one thing that I want to clarify, we've been doing this willingly, we are doing it willingly. We don't need Sacramento to tell us what to do and how to do it. We're gonna do it, and we're gonna do it right. And I think the best way to send a message to Sacramento is what we're doing now here today, and that is to just get it done, just to move forward and get it done. I also want to add the thanks to the members of the public and organizations who have been volunteering their time and meeting with my staff and meeting with various stakeholders here and making sure we move forward with good policy. And also, the neighborhood councils have been more and more engaged on this issue and many others. I just want to say this has been a very transparent movement here, and it's something we can all feel proud of. And I want to thank you, Henry, Frank, and Bob, thank you very much for your countless hours of hard, hard work on this. I think it's gonna be a true model and something that I think private industry is gonna start copying what we're doing here because I think we're gonna do it right, and we're gonna do it in a way that we can be proud of. So once again, thank you. A lot of work has been done, we've got a lot of work to do, but we're on the right track. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Before we proceed to a vote, let me just recognize the members of the public who are here. A public hearing has already taken place for this item, but Woody Hastings is here, Martin Schagert is here, Mary Lovano's here. Those were the, among many others, stakeholders that Mr. Cardenas references having been part of this process. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those matters are approved. Seventy-five is received and filed. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 19, call special for a card from the public.
Item 19 now before us, and the council calls forward Adam Rivera and Maria Diaz. Are you still here?
Well, we're here to let you know that we don't agree with the lien because apparently the city haven't spent any money on this property. And our mistake was we just do the repairs ourselves, and we didn't hire a professional with the permit and plans. So that was the big mistake. So if you can give us another chance to do the repairs and hire somebody professional with the properly way, that would be appreciated. Because when we bought this property, it was with this problem already, and we're trying to resolve, but it's been very difficult to do it. Also, we not receiving any money with the tenants because of the problems. So it's been difficult for us on the money cost.
Okay, thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Members wishing to be heard, Mr. Garcetti? Yeah, why don't we continue this a day, and I'll have my staff talk with them and see what we can do. Okay. Without objection, this matter is continued till tomorrow. That brings us to item 24. Item called special by Mr. Zine.
Just to have the amending motion accepted. This issue deals with retired commissioners, that they would have a memento from the city of Los Angeles. It would be in Plexiglas, it would not be able to be carried on their person, basically something as a token of remembrance of their service as a commissioner. We've worked this out with the clerk and other entities. They would bear all the costs involved in having the modification done to the badge that was used for identification. And I think our state attorney has the language prepared, and the amending motion contains all of the changes that hopefully will resolve any issues about the misuse of badges for commissioners.
And that has been circulated?
Yes, and there is a new ordinance.
Okay. With those changes, any further discussion? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item 24, as amended, is approved.
And the ord goes over for one week.
Okay, that brings us to item, we're gonna take concurrent public comment for item 40, 50, and 58. If Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins will come forward at this time. Forty, 50, and 58.
No, I will cancel that and wait to number, the next number.
Okay, we're gonna take them all together here, 40, 50, 58. You're gonna pass? Okay, public comment is closed on those three items.
I'm not gonna pass, I was just waiting for the next number to be called.
We're gonna take them all together, 40, 50, 58.
Okay, thank you. Have three minutes?
Two.
Two minutes. Okay, thank you, Councilman. Again, on number, I would just speak on number 50 and number 58. Again, working with the age and the arc and HIV, dealing with older age and benefits and the disadvantages program. I believe we must at this time make it very clear concerning the reports of false answers. Nor now, since 1990, the condom has been destroyed with poison around the liquid of the condom. Because we are at war, we must destroy, we must be cautious as of taking varroa cocker birth control pills at this time. Also, on number 58, I would say no on all fees and costs because of BET calls to all customers. I believe at this time, all satellite, AT&amp;T, and all stations should be canceled. Also, on Channel 35, because of faking of antennas and how we must buy now television, we must also buy an antenna that is connected to the surrounding areas where we are living at. Now we are at war, the antennas are connected to Iraq, and now it's wireless. Now we are in danger as of them watching us through the TV. We must at this time buy regular television for all cities of California to view the war. Now we must buy satellite in order to know what is going on with our war. I believe it's, we are at war time, and we must view the war from a regular station, regular stations, not satellite. Again, I believe that all televisions might be cut off, which may take from a year to six months.
Thank you.
Again, can I have 30 seconds?
That's it. Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item 40, 50, and 58. Members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, colleagues, that's the end of our agenda. Do we have any announcements today? Let me actually be the first to just thank all of you who were able to make the County Board of Supervisors meeting this morning. For members of the public, not sure why today's meeting started at a special time. It's because most of us had a chance to visit the County Board of Supervisors this morning on the issue of the proposal for a half-cent sales tax increase for public safety. So colleagues, I think we made a strong showing and sent a very strong message to our colleagues on the board. Thank you for being there. Other announcements? Mr. Ludlow.
President, just actually, on that note, wanted to publicly commend you. I thought today's delegation was a good delegation. I know Janice Hahn was there, Wendy Gruel was there, Jan Perry was there, Dennis Zine was there, Cindy Misakowski was there.
Mr. Garcetti?
I got you there. And there may have been a couple of others that I'm leaving out. Garcetti was there, our mayor was there, our chief of police was there. It was a strong delegation and hoping that they do the right thing. But thank you for your leadership on that. And then, secondly, just Councilmember Parks and I had the opportunity to welcome President William Jefferson Clinton into LA, and almost 5,000 people came out, got books signed. And I can tell you, colleagues, that by the end of the session, it was the first time I'd ever seen Bill Clinton totally red, both in the face and in the hands. He literally signed thousands of autographs and stood on his feet for about eight hours, nonstop. And so he still has the campaign in him, I'm sure. But anyway, thank you all for your support.
So those autographed copies of the book are gonna be coming around?
Yeah, I'm sup, no.
Mr. Cardenas.
I just want to take a moment to thank Jack Weiss for inspiring me to get involved with the bone marrow registry work. We had our first, as I had promised, to do many of them in the Latino community. We did one in Sun Valley on Sunday, and the people who did the bone marrow work were saying, as long as we get 100, that's a really good day. We got 276 people to sign up. So thank you very much, good work, and we're on our way to doing many, many, many more.
May I just follow that? Good for you, Mr. Cardenas. That is really, that is really wonderful. And I'm incredibly impressed and incredibly proud. Just to let you and everybody else here know that I think it's gonna be on July 14 and July 15, there's a citywide, or a city worker blood drive. And the stats for just the availability of blood right now in the city of LA are astonishing. There's like a couple days of O negative blood, period, in the entire city. And city workers evidently have had a rather poor percentage in terms of turnout, like, you know, a couple hundred turnout. We've got tens of thousands of city workers. So really trying to get people out on July 14 and 15, and they will be able to get on the bone marrow registry at that time as well. Thank you for doing that, Tony.
Mr. Zine.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Susan Bosler from Valley Village. She's the Director of Marketing and Development. And at a recent event, I think it was the Warner Center, Woodland Hills Chamber of Commerce, she paid to spend a day with the councilmen, see how the council works in action, and part of that is you get to be on television. So here you are, Susan, your cameo appearance on television. And thank you for helping out the Chamber of Commerce and also for all you do at Valley Village to help the folks that utilize that facility.
Thank you, Councilman Zine, and it's an extreme honor and a privilege to just to just watch city government in action. We are all very proud of what you do in our communities, and we're particularly proud of our two council members, Councilwoman Gruel and Councilmember Zine, who support our programs out in the valley. We do programs for the adult developmentally disabled, and we thank you very much, and it's a great honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one announcement. On July 4, the Cultural Affairs Department, 8th District, is gonna have our second annual Fourth of July Jazz and Blues Festival at the parking lot behind the Vision Theater at 3441 West 45. at 3441 West 43rd Place. Starts at 1:00 PM to 7:00. And just at dusk, we'll have the second annual fireworks show at the Coliseum.
Other announcements? Other announcements? There are no other announcements? Colleagues, let me just remind you all that tomorrow's meeting, which is at the regular time, 10:00 AM, includes an agenda item, both open session and, if necessary, a closed session briefing from the Chief of Police and the Inspector General on the use of force incidents from last week. So just wanted to call your attention to that item in preparation for tomorrow. There's no further announcements? Please rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning tributes? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's the adjourn in memory of Clifford Horn, who's worked for several years as a paramedic and a postal worker, spent the majority of his career as a bus operator and line supervisor for MTA, and for 15 consecutive years, he received the coveted Safety Award. In 1989, Mr. Horn retired from the MTA after 25 years of dedicated service. He was married to his wife, Edna, for 43 years. He passed away on Saturday, June 19. He leaves his wife, Edna, and three daughters and other relatives.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.[1765.13]